All right, want to welcome everybody to our Board of Supervisor meeting today, July 21st. We're going to call our meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Good morning, everybody. Want to welcome you out and thank everybody for coming to our meeting and hope you had an enjoyable weekend and enjoyed the little bit of moisture we got last week. Go ahead and get moving down the agenda. Can we get a motion to approve our minutes from our July 7th meeting?
Chairman Mack.
Chairman Mack, I'll go ahead and move that we do approve the meeting and work session from July 7th, 2025 minutes.
I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Get a motion to approve our demands and handwritten warrants.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Now turn the time over to our Sheriff, PJ Alred.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
So we do have one item right here. The first, for an approval of a modification of our grant we have with the Cornell National Forest and the Sheriff's Office. One of the modifications is that we're going to be able to receive an additional like $6,000 in this grant. Basically what it does, it goes towards overtime, some other things. It basically helps us where we patrol the mountains some. Where the Forest Service there for a while, they didn't have a signed LEO for Mount Graham for a while. They do have one now, but it's one guy and he has this forest and he has a couple of other locations also, but we do patrol Mount Graham. So we're able to use that money to pay for our deputies whenever we do do that patrol for Mount Graham. So yeah, but we do get some additional monies. So that's a good thing for us.
Great. We always like additional funding to help out and the mountain definitely needs us up there. So any other questions, concerns?
Not for me.
I was just pleased to see that we can actually carry over those funds that they didn't lapse or we didn't lose them since we didn't use all of last year's allotments. So I'll go ahead and make a motion and appreciate the efforts to patrol the mountain. And I'm pleased to move that we approve the grant cooperative agreement modification between the Forest Service and Graham County Sheriff's Office.
And I will second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Now turn the time over to our Sheriff, PJ Alred.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
So we do have one item right here. The first, for an approval of a modification of our grant we have with the Cornell National Forest and the Sheriff's Office. One of the modifications is that we're going to be able to receive an additional like $6,000 in this grant. Basically what it does, it goes towards overtime, some other things. It basically helps us where we patrol the mountains some. Where the Forest Service there for a while, they didn't have a signed LEO for Mount Graham for a while. They do have one now, but it's one guy and he has this forest and he has a couple of other locations also, but we do patrol Mount Graham. So we're able to use that money to pay for our deputies whenever we do do that patrol for Mount Graham. So yeah, but we do get some additional monies. So that's a good thing for us.
Great. We always like additional funding to help out and the mountain definitely needs us up there. So any other questions, concerns?
Not for me.
I was just pleased to see that we can actually carry over those funds that they didn't lapse or we didn't lose them since we didn't use all of last year's allotments. So I'll go ahead and make a motion and appreciate the efforts to patrol the mountain. And I'm pleased to move that we approve the grant cooperative agreement modification between the Forest Service and Graham County Sheriff's Office.
And I will second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Now turn the time over to our Sheriff, PJ Alred.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
So we do have one item right here. The first, for an approval of a modification of our grant we have with the Cornell National Forest and the Sheriff's Office. One of the modifications is that we're going to be able to receive an additional like $6,000 in this grant. Basically what it does, it goes towards overtime, some other things. It basically helps us where we patrol the mountains some. Where the Forest Service there for a while, they didn't have a assigned LEO for Mount Graham for a while. They do have one now, but it's one guy and he has this forest and he has a couple of other locations also, but we do patrol Mount Graham. So we're able to use that money to pay for our deputies whenever we do do that patrol for Mount Graham. So yeah, but we do get some additional monies. So that's a good thing for us.
Great. We always like additional funding to help out and the mountain definitely needs us up there. So any other questions, concerns?
Not for me.
I was just pleased to see that we can actually carry over those funds that they didn't lapse or we didn't lose them since we didn't use all of last year's allotments. So I'll go ahead and make a motion and appreciate the efforts to patrol the mountain. And I'm pleased to move that we approve the grant cooperative agreement modification between the Forest Service and Graham County Sheriff's Office.
And I will second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Now turn the time over to our Sheriff, PJ Alred.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning, Hannah.
Morning.
Thank you so much for, let me take a few minutes. What we're doing today is asking for the ratification of some legal services contracts. All of these contracts have been in place for multiple years. Some of them, Matt Clifford's felony contract predates my 10 years county attorney. So this isn't exactly new territory, but we do want to make sure the board approves and ratifies the new fiscal year contracts. The first one that we have for your consideration is Matt Clifford. He has been doing our misdemeanor prosecutions in the justice court. He does all the cases that come through the justice court minus a few here and there which either require special attention or in most
All right, want to welcome everybody to our Board of Supervisor meeting today, July 21st. We're gonna call our meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Good morning, everybody. Want to welcome you out and thank everybody for coming to our meeting and hope you had a enjoyable weekend and enjoyed the little bit of moisture we got last week. Go ahead and get moving down the agenda. Can we get a motion to approve our minutes from our July 7th meeting?
Chairman Mack, I'll go ahead and move that we do approve the meeting and work session from July 7th, 2025 minutes.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Get a motion to approve our demands and handwritten warrants.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 A motion passes. Now turn the time over to our Sheriff PJ Allred.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
So we do have one item right here. The first, for an approval of a modification of our grant we have with the coronal national force and sheriff's office. We're, one of the modifications is that we're going to be able to receive an additional like $6,000 in this grant. Basically what it does, we, it goes towards overtime, some other things. It basically helps us where we patrol the mountains some. Where the forest service there for a while, they didn't have a assigned LEO for Mount Graham for a while. They do have one now, but it's one guy. And he has this forest and he has a couple of other locations also, but we do patrol Mount Graham. So we're able to use that money to pay for our deputies whenever we do do that patrol for Mount Graham. So yeah, but we do get some additional monies. So that's a good thing for us.
Great. We always like additional funding to help out and the mountain definitely needs us up there. So any other questions, concerns?
Not for me.
I was just pleased to see that we can actually carry over those funds that they didn't lapse or we didn't lose them since we didn't use all of last year's allotment. So. I'm, I'll go ahead and make a motion and appreciate the efforts to patrol the mountain. And I'm pleased to move that we approve the grant cooperative agreement modification between the forest service and Graham County Sheriff's Office.
And I will second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, Sheriff. Now hear from Mr. Bennett with our county attorney's office.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning Hannah.
Morning.
Thank you so much for, let me take a few minutes. What we're doing today is asking for the ratification of some legal services contracts. All of these contracts have been in place for multiple years. Some of them, Matt Clifford's felony contract predates my 10 years county attorney. So this isn't exactly new territory, but we do want to make sure the board approves and ratifies the new fiscal year contracts. The first one that we have for your consideration is Matt Clifford. He is, has been doing our misdemeanor prosecutions in the justice court. He does all the cases that come through the justice court minus a few here and there, which either require special attention or in most cases, he has a conflict in. Anyway, that's a set price. All the numbers were given to you and we're asking that the board approve that misdemeanor contract with Mr. Clifford.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Board, any questions or concerns?
None here.
No, thank you. And this, yeah, this is a, we're approving a motion, an action already taken, so.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to ratification of the 2526 agreement for legal service, Matt Clifford, for misdemeanor prosecution.
I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you. The next one is also with Mr. Clifford. It's not as lucrative as a contract, but certainly Mr. Clifford has helped the office out. Again, his, his time in Graham County predates mine. This contract would be for him to take our conflict cases and also additional felony prosecutions. He's done this, like I said, for years and years and we're asking that you all ratify this contract as well.
Nothing here.
I did have a question, Chairman. The first one is a set annual fee and it's a second, an hourly, or is that also an annual fee?
It's also an hourly.
Okay.
We did put a cap on it, so it will not exceed a specific amount of funds. But he is paid hourly for his felony prosecutions.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll go ahead and I'm pleased to move that we approve the, and ratify the legal service agreement with Matt Clifford for felony and conflict prosecution on behalf of Graham County.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes.
Okay. The next one, very similar. The structure of the contract slightly different. This is with Daniel Taylor. As opposed to paying him for felony prosecution on an hourly basis, he has a set fee for the year. He prosecutes a specific number of cases throughout the year, which is divided up into monthly increments for a set price. The nice thing about that is we've worked it out that should he go to trial or, you know, come in for extended suppression hearings, whatever the case may be, we won't have to take on that extra cost. So we're asking that you ratify the contract and this is very similar to the contract that he's had for the last several years. There was a slight bump in it, but it was for all intents purposes, more of a thank you for what you're doing as opposed to a major increase.
Okay. Questions?
Go ahead and make a motion to ratify the agreement, 2526, FY 2526 agreement for legal services with Daniel Taylor.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you. And the last one I'm bringing before you today is a contract for legal services with Debbie Barnes. Just procedurally speaking, Ms. Barnes retired. She wanted to do some part-time work and we discovered that based on her 30-plus years of service in Graham County, she was an incredible consultant as well. The part-time nature of what she was doing gave her the flexibility to spend time with grandchildren and do some traveling, but still consult and help us in our office. I can tell you that she's, among other things, done our EDC caseload, which has been fantastic. We, we are very, all of our legal assistants are as efficient as they can be with their time and the amount of work they all do is incredible, but there's only so many hours in the day and having Debbie on board to do this kind of quasi consulting slash legal assistant work has been just one of those rare contracts that works absolutely perfect for our office and absolutely perfect for her. So we're continuing with that and we ask that you would ratify the, the contract that we have for the fiscal year of 2526.
Great. Want to thank all these people that help us out. It saves the county money and definitely does us a great service for our community. Any questions, concerns?
No, Debbie is a great asset. She always has been. Glad we can keep her hanging in there and helping out over there and take the load off of you guys.
And I would just add, it's a phenomenal value to have someone with that kind of tenure and expertise working as a consultant and there's no health or, or, or E R, E R E, retirement. It's just basically an hourly, which is a great value for the county. I'll go ahead and move to approve.
I will second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Glad to have you back and appreciate you.
Thank you. It's good to be back.
Now hear from Mr. Andrews with probation.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
I'm here to ask for approval to accept a grant between the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission and Graham County Probation Department. It's for our drug detection dog.
Questions?
Questions.
I, I had a couple of questions in, in, I know in the past, and I don't know if that's just the sheriff's office, but we did assist other counties from time to time. Is this going to be, are we limited by the language to only Graham County? Not that I'm advocating out of town, a lot of out of town trips, but it seems like if there's only four of these canines that are, that we get to grant for statewide, that others may have a need.
No, we, we can also assist other counties and, and the schools. That's why we were pushing for it.
So will these, can you actually, will the law allow us to take these canines into schools and search lockers and for guns and contraband?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Very good. Well, it's great to spend other people's money.
Yeah.
Get a grant. And, and I can see you, your packet that you prepared for us, talking about the time savings of having a canine go through a house and do it in a fourth or a fifth or a sixth of the time that two or more people would be searching. I can see the benefit and so. And the training is, is, there's, there's money for travel and training, right?
Yes, sir. It encompasses everything. And so far, we have started all the, the teams trainings. So just to get the lingo down and stuff like that. And then our first in-person training will be towards the end of the month.
Sure. This is a one time, this, there's, let's say next year, there's no support funds for the, for the canine. It's basically ours once, once we get it.
Yes, sir.
So, okay. Thank you very much. It sounds like a, I mean, I, I, you know, sometimes you can have overkill and you see people with police dogs snapping at, at, at demonstrators, but, but this is certainly not the case here. And the canine will be a, I think will be a benefit. So I would go ahead and move that we approve the grant application between ACJC and Graham County.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Appreciate you being here today. We'll now turn the time over to Mr. Angle with our engineering department.
Good morning.
Morning.
Okay, the first one is an approval of an agreement with Spencer Udall Engineering Services LLC for structural engineering services on tally wash bridge design.
Yeah, I'm very excited about this project. It's been a long time coming. It'll, it'll be a great improvement over there, safety for folks. So thank you for working on that and getting this done.
The only comment I would add, and I echo Supervisor Howard, is, is the fact that this is a local structural engineer and it's given us a phenomenal quote, much lower than, than, than the rest of the market. So that is great to get this in-house professional service.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the agreement with Spencer Udall Engineering Services for the tally wash design.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you. Next one is approval of a five-month agreement with JP Drafting and Design LLC to provide drafting services in the engineering department.
No comments.
It's, it's worked well. Again, we've got a consultant, independent contractor and, and, and no additional costs other than the hourly. So I'd move to.
Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. If you're okay, I want to do the proclamation to the, to the young child first and then we'll, then we'll do the, do the budget. Governor Hobbs has proclaimed August as Child Support Awareness Month. The Department of Economic Security Division of Child Support Services is kindly asking each board and each county to have a proclamation in support of Child Support Awareness Month. As stated in the proclamation, the Department of Economic Security Division of Child Support Services is robustly committed to putting Arizona's children first and to humbly serving Arizonans with excellence, respect, integrity and kindness, as well as being an overall champion for economic growth and opportunity. The county's partnering efforts are, are a valuable resource as DES engages with parents, caretakers and children throughout the state of Arizona. So we've, we've presented this 2025 Child Support Awareness Proclamation to the board and we recommend adoption of it.
Thank you, Manager Welker. Any questions from the board, concerns?
No comment.
I just would, would add with our, our women infant and children grants, our other programs our health department has and the Mental Health Coalition and their emphasis on, on, on children. And there's so many good things that are going on. I know that Manager Welker is on the first things first. He's on the board for that. So Graham County, it's not just, let's, let's support them by signing this proclamation. This is something that employees do. Law enforcement on a regular basis is, is provide and support the young children in our, in our community, not to mention the, the work by our superintendent of schools. So these are all good things. Taxes that we collect on behalf of the schools, these are all critical in our, our social fabric and taking care of our children.
Go ahead and make a motion to approve the week of the young child 2025 proclamation.
And I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes.
All right, this next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, is to request adoption of the preliminary budget retroactive to July 1st, 2025. As, as you are well aware, this is a very arduous task that we start back in January with all 22 of our departments. There are hundreds and hundreds of hours that pour into this and, and we could, we could argue that setting a, a budget is the most important thing that we do as a government. We spend a lot of time scrutinizing over every dollar that we spend. We very dutifully look at each department's budget and each thing that, that we, we pay for. We zero-dollar budget, which is according to government requirement, or requirements, which means that every dollar of carryover and every dollar of anticipated revenue is budgeted and to be expended in the budget. Graham County, historically, we're very conservative and we work very hard to, to keep it that way. We, we feel like we need to be very dutiful and, and conscientious of spending taxpayer dollars. And I feel like we have a good long history of doing that. So before we get into the fiscal year 2026 budget, as I've done in the years past, I just want to highlight some of the things that we were able to do and accomplish in fiscal year 25 with the funding that we have. One of the biggest projects that we were able to finish was the $2.3 million Motorola upgrade for dispatch. This included the sheriff's office radios, tower equipment and communication equipment, consoles and other dispatch equipment throughout the county. We went from an analog system to a digital system, which was a huge upgrade for us. This initially started as a, as a general fund project, but thank you so much to Sheriff Allred, under Sheriff McCormes, they were able to get state funds outside of this and pay for that, that system. It's been, it's been great. So that, that's been active for, for less than a month or less than just a few weeks. And that project is complete and we're in maintenance mode now for that. We installed several drinking fountains at the fairgrounds. We began the development of a master landscape, waterline and drainage plan at the fairgrounds. We began, four years ago, we began with an unfunded liability in our PSPRS, which is our public safety retirement system. We had an unfunded liability of $4 million. Through strategic allocations, we have successfully paid down that unfunded liability to virtually zero, is what we hit this year. That was really the only bad debt that the county had about four years ago and we made a goal to, to pay it down. And this year we were able to accomplish that. Thank you to the, to the board and, and the decisions that you made. We supported the construction of the new search and rescue training facility, which has turned out great. Really want to thank search and rescue for spearheading that project. Were able to double chip seal power line road, which was one of the heaviest traveled bus route dirt roads that we had. We want to especially thank the board for your help in securing the right of way and the engineering and highway for performing the work quickly and 100% in-house. We took the salvageable playground shade structure components that burned down a few years ago and refurbished them into a shade awning for our large equipment at the fairgrounds maintenance yard. We constructed a 25-foot tall fairgrounds displaying digital sign on Highway 70, just in time for the fair. We successfully transitioned all the, to all departments entering their own time into the payroll system, allowing departments greater control, additional time to meet deadlines with the goal of more accurate timekeeping. We drilled a well at Central Park. The first listened to Chairman's Mac and his witchery and, and followed that and wished where the well should have been and I was doubtful to say the least and wrong. We, we, we brought some well witchers in and they showed us where the water was going to be and how much there would be. And that's exactly how much it was. So thank you, Chairman Mac, and I all eat crow again on that one. We started a contract to rewrite our zoning ordinance. We began the Gila River linear park design. We held a very successful and I would say nearly flawless primary and general elections in July and November 2024. We rebuilt the intersection of Norton Road and Ray Lane. We had a very large project to replace all of our IT storage servers, which also went really well. We re-roofed our animal control facility. We put 164 capital assets into service worth $2.83 million. We replaced four of our dispatch stations. We installed six grapplers on our sheriff's office vehicles. We replaced all eight of our barn doors on the existing exhibit buildings to become compliant with the state fire marshal. We replaced our manual accounts payable purchase order and demand system with the fully electronic system, which now links purchase orders and payments and allows access to all documents of past payments for department review. We replaced the concrete floor in the common sense building. We poured a very large concrete floor on the dirt half of the Ag Building. So the entire Ag Building has a concrete floor now. We replaced halogen lights on bulb field three with LEDs. We issued a successful audit ahead of federal deadlines and made real progress toward resolving the remaining two findings that we've been working on. We purchased portable pitching mounds for Little League. We repaired the roof on the main highway department building. Also upgraded the shop oil room over at the highway department. Purchased a brand new 308 excavator. We installed light poles on Highway 191 at the fairgrounds entrance. And we installed software to allow all employees direct access to their pay stubs and W2s from home, resulting in countless hours and dollars saved from printing pay stubs and paint and stuffing envelopes every two weeks. And last but not least, for the fourth year in a row, we won first place in the light parade. All right. So last year's gone. So here are some of the highlights for, for this fiscal year. We have a total general fund budget of $62.8 million, a total all overall budget of 132.2 A total all, overall budget of $132.2 million. And just a reminder again, we zero dollar budget, which means we have to budget for every carryover. So every dollar that we have sitting in a bank account and every grant that we think we might get or might go after. Minus contingency in the, in the general fund of 33.7 million. That leaves us with a planned general fund expenditure of 22.1 million. Um, I'm very happy to report, um, that this year we're able to make the budget work and this includes a 4% market increase for all employees. This budget also includes for the 14th year in a row, the county will not be increasing employee contribution match for health benefits. This budget includes several projects and initiatives that, um, that we're anxious to, to get on. This is not an all-inclusive list, but here are some of them. Continue rewriting our planning zoning ordinance, continue the design and possible start of construction for the Gila River Linear Park. Uh, it continues PSPRS payments toward unfunded liability, but at a much lower contribution. Uh, this includes continuous criminal monitoring and pre-employment polygraphs, uh, for detention officers. Over in our dispatch center, we are adding CAD mapping, a mapping system to, to track our Sheriff's Office deputies and, and others, so we know where they're at, at all times for emergency purposes. Includes AI paging, which allows us to get a page and a text out to emergency personnel, um, almost immediately or as we're receiving information from a 911 caller. It includes a redundancy line, um, into dispatch. So if dispatch goes down, we'll, we'll have a backup and includes a certified, uh, training program for our dispatchers. This includes a new K9 for the Sheriff's Office and, and equipment and a, uh, further remodel support for search and rescue. Includes a new K9 for probation. Um, in the election department, uh, a transport trailer, camera monitoring for recorder and election employees and, and new ballot printers. Uh, includes a remodel of the main street building. Um, several improvements for the courthouse exterior and includes new flooring in our senior center. Uh, includes further Central Park, uh, improvements. Includes at the Ag Building, insulating the ceiling and adding a gas line and heaters in Building 4. Includes fairgrounds, a new waterline system for the reclaimed water, landscape drainage and parking improvements throughout the park. Uh, this includes adding some or installing some drinking fountains outside the courthouse. Um, includes a dump trailer for planning and zoning to help us assist with blight. Includes a probation control room remodel. At the highway department includes new diagnostic equipment, a commercial vacuum, a new 10-wheeled dump truck, uh, new radios and a 14-foot grizzly material screener. Includes a Lebanon cemetery, low water crossing, chip seal on, a double chip seal on Emory Road, Clough Avenue and Sanchez Road. Um, includes the Tally Wash Bridge Project, digital courtroom updates in the Superior and Pro Tem Courtrooms, courtroom benches in the Superior Court, new metal detector at the courthouse. And the Justice Court, some, uh, door upgrade and ceiling tile replacements. Agricultural concession building electric upgrade, um, lighting upgrade from halogen to LED lights on exterior poles throughout the fairgrounds and the goal to win the light parade for the fifth year in a row. So that, that's a, that's a highlight. Of, of course, we, we have the required preliminary budget document that's much harder to read, but that are, is required from the state. And, uh, again, we're, we're, we're proud of the budget we've put together. We've asked all the department heads, elected officials to be here today for some further information once this meeting's over and we have several packets and, and papers to, to hand to you. Um, but with that, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, we recommend the adoption of the 2025, 2026 budget.
Thank you, Manager Welker. Just want to express our appreciation to everybody that helped out and worked with us on the budget. We appreciate all your, all your effort and helping us to make it an easy process.
I'd just go ahead and, and add a couple of things. Your list was very comprehensive, but, uh, we did get license plate readers either this year or just before the, the beginning of, of this year, uh, which was, uh, uh, grant money. Uh, we, we did add an emergency alert system. As you, uh, read about and, and, and watch the news about disasters, uh, we, we're online and, and have a way of, of, of letting our own people, we've even used it once for the Fort Thomas Fire. Um, the parking lots, we, we, you'll have to ask Dustin how he pulled it off, but we're getting people to, uh, pave our, our parking lots with, with the millings for 50 cents an hour, which is, uh, anyway. And, and then, uh, the, one of the important things is that there's no employee, increase in employee contributions uh, for health in, uh, insurance, but our health insurance contribution rate did go up. But we're, we're, uh, shielding, uh, this year for the time being, best we can, our employees from cost increases. So those are just some of the, uh, the other, uh, very, very good things, which, uh, I, I'm, I'm pleased to be a, a part of and, and to, uh, to, to say yes, uh, this is, uh, something that all, all 278 employees of the county have, have done this year.
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on that to, uh, the, uh, the work you guys put into this is amazing to watch and I have to tip my hat off to all of our department's elected officials. How frugal you are and how you run your departments makes our job a lot easier. And I, I really respect the time that you all put in for this and it's amazing place to be a part of. I, I just can't reiterate enough how, how hard you all work and how honored I am to be able to work with you and, and to be able to approve these budgets and hopefully give you most of the things you want. We know we can't give you all we want, but we tried our hardest to, to do the things that are necessary. So thank you all very much. And with that being said, I would like to make a motion to approve the 2025, 26 preliminary budget.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. All right, we'll take a quick opportunity here for members of the Board to, uh, talk, give a brief summary of current events. Um, we'll start with Vice Chairman David.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, I'll, I'll be, uh, very short. Uh, there was, uh, on the 8th of July, traveled to Alpine for Eastern Counties Organization Annual Meeting. It was a two-day meeting. We talked about forest restoration issues. The, um, the fact that the, uh, the, the new administration has, uh, sent out an, an executive order to increase, uh, timber production. Uh, this will, uh, probably help the Pacific Northwest more than anything, but we have lots of, of small diameter trees that, uh, what they call the For Frye or the For, Forest Restoration, uh, is, is undertaking and has been, where they take the small diameter trees, sometimes up to 600 of them in an acre, and, uh, turn that into, uh, um, either, either the, the, um, the waste products go for energy generation. They get taken to Snowflake and, and the other things are, are converted into, into timber. And also there's a, a wolf, um, uh, concerns and, uh, we, we talk, we just added, there was a news release where there was, uh, $25,000 from the Eastern Counties Organization for Range Riders to, uh, I wouldn't say harass wolves, but to keep the wolves and, and, and livestock separated in Arizona. So that was a very productive meeting where we were concerned about water issues and continue to be. Um, the, uh, later, uh, the next morning on, on the, the 10th, I attended a Arizona Department Liquor Licensing Control, uh, hearing, uh, and, uh, responsible issuance of, of licenses and, and, uh, also monitored and, and sometimes with, withdraw licenses from people who are, are not, uh, um, not keeping the law and allowing, uh, violent acts to occur in their parking lot or in their building. Uh, the, next week, uh, there was a, a breakfast meeting with, uh, the, the hospital where we talked about emergency services in our valley and, and how we can improve them. Uh, later that day, there was a community drug trends, uh, training to, uh, and I, I attended just to find out what are the, some of the emergent drugs? What are the threats? What's, what is happening? And, and it's, it's good to report that the, that the border security has cut down, uh, a, a lot of the, uh, supply. Um, there was a communications workshop later that evening that I attended. Uh, and then the next day, um, on Thursday, uh, Mental Health Action Committee, where the, that was done by Health Department and we are coordinating mental health, um, uh, availability and, uh, and providers and just coordinating that. And then lastly, I'll report on, well, next to last, uh, Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. They had, uh, uh, $2 million, uh, the $2 million that they wanted to raise. So they unilaterally decided to raise landfill fees, cost per ton, um, uh, monitoring, uh, reporting, uh, sometimes 200, 300 or more percent. And not only that, but it was, it, uh, they didn't even, they were going to implement that before the, the budget year. So there wasn't even a chance for people to have a, uh, to, 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 to say, hey, you know, uh, we'll, we'll budget for it next year, but, but, uh, so it impacted existing budgets. Fortunately, uh, they, they reported that, uh, that they, uh, are only going to raise the prices based on the, uh, Consumer Price Index and, and that the legislature, uh, and the, and the judicial had found some rules that they had violated and they slapped their hands and, and, and their two, $3 million increases are off the table. So, so for the time being, uh, this affects our county, everything from transfer stations to our landfill dumping fees. And, uh, we have a, a landfill that we're retiring, or it's been retired that we still have to report on. So that's going to be a, a cost savings for the county, which is great. And then lastly, I, um, there was a, a meeting that we, all three of us attended, uh, where we heard the Corporation Commission, Commissioner, uh, talk about, uh, things that are, that she's involved in. And then, uh, had an, an opportunity to enjoy Saturday evening, the Pioneer Day activities at the, uh, at the college. And that was, that was really nice. And, and our county manager was, had a different hat on, but he was helping to, to be in charge of that and things went very well. It's my, my, what I thought was going to be a brief report.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Supervisor Howard?
Yeah, on the 8th, uh, I had the opportunity to, to go to the opening of the hospital or dedication of the Hospital Trauma Center and was asked to speak there and what a great honor that was. The hospital is doing great things and they're beginning to be a force in the, in the, uh, medical industry here. They have great plans to do big things in, in the future, a lot more coming. And then also I attended that breakfast and on, on the 15th, I had a, uh, Gila Valley Watershed Partnership Board meeting here. And then on the 16th, I did my first, uh, FMI investment committee training. I was invited to be on that committee, which I'm excited about. It, it does a lot of the important fundings into our community and it, I'm honored to be able to be a part of that. I just want to say about the, uh, out at the Discovery Park that we all attended, the Commissioner there, the Leah Peterson, she is a very knowledgeable lady and you could tell she has rural Arizona in her best interest to protect us on our energy, uh, supplies and, and the, 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 uh, ability to possibly keep the coal going a little bit to, to suffice our infrastructure in case something happens on, on the natural gas will not, uh, uh, be able to provide enough energy. So that was good to know. And then just, just to note, uh, the Cattlemen's, Arizona State Cattlemen's Association will be having their convention here this week, starting on the 23rd through the 25th down to DAC. There'll be a lot of cattle producers here, ranchers and important issues talked about. So it's just something to keep in mind on that. So that's all I have.
Thank you, gentlemen. I don't have a lot more to add to that from what was already said, but again, want to thank, uh, all our elected officials for taking time out of your day to be here for our meeting. We appreciate you and the jobs that you do. Um, do we have any calls to the public, Ken? Okay. So we have a couple of, uh, bids to open. The first one is going to be for the Graham County Jail Food Bid.
Oh, except food.
Yeah, it's not food.
Okay.
These bids are getting thick. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, so this food service agreement, this is the, this is for the contractor that provides meals to our inmates, three meals a day, 365 days a year. So it is certainly one of our, our bigger contracts. Um, we bid this out every five years. So the, the current contractor, which is the Summit, right, Commander? Yeah, Summit Food Services is the current contractor. Their contract is, is up in September. Um, so we have bid this out. It's a very lengthy, uh, bid packet. I think it was 28 pages. There's a lot that go, goes into this, um, a lot of specifications when it comes to calories per meal. Uh, nutrition, they're required to have a nutritionist on staff, uh, to do these meals. And eventually, as we go through those folders of fun, we have some hung coming up. Commander, go through all these. We'll get to a dollar per meal cost, but we'll also have to make sure they, they meet all the requirements, uh, not just the county is set, but, but state statute sets as far as what's required of these meals on a daily basis. Uh, we're very fortunate to have a, a very, very good jail and a very good kitchen, uh, that we provide to the contractor. And of course, we provide, uh, some of the inmates to help with these meals on a daily basis. So I, I, I do not believe we're going to be able to get down to a dollar amount just looking at what we have here. We're going to have to go through these. Um, so I, I, no, I, I suggest a motion for, for the Board. If you can tell us who these are each from and then if, if the Board wouldn't mind kicking these back to staff for us to analyze and, and bring back to you, uh, the, the contractor with the information that we gleaned from these proposals.
Mr. Chairman, I would, uh, recommend, uh, uh, the, the packet that I have is from Trinity Services Group. Consists of duplicates, but three original, uh, one, two, three, four, five, uh, three original packets and then some nutritional, uh, detail analysis. And I would, um, move that we go ahead and refer this to staff that, that, uh, they make this, uh, available just as quickly as possible. Is that for, for those who are listening in or, or checking in, would that be available through the Board of Supervisors office? Or, or, or was just going to go to the Sheriff's Office for their review?
Well, we'll, we'll look at them in the Board of Supervisors office, but mainly Commander Perez. He's been the, the spearhead on, on this and the Sheriff's Office and the Board will look at it together and, and review them all.
Okay.
Review them both. There's just two.
And then as far as the, uh, so we will refer this, the motion is to refer this for review for compliance to, uh, the specifications and, and then, uh, award it to the lowest responsible, uh, and, and compliant bidder. And, and we would allow that to take place, uh, outside this board meeting as a result of our confidence in our, in our, uh, in our, in our personnel and the transparency.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Perfect.
I believe this one was from Brendan McNeen, M-C-N-A-M-E-E. That's who this is from and it's quite thorough and heavy.
Is that, is there a company on there? Is that Summit?
I don't see it anywhere.
Okay, that, I believe that's the, the current contractor and Trinity is.
Summit Food Service?
Summit Food Services, that's correct. And Trinity has also had the contract in, in past years too. So there's two, two contractors we're familiar with and have worked with before. So there's two, two contractors we're familiar with and have worked with before. TJ's been working out for the last year just to carry these back to his office.
So we have a motion?
Yes. Motion is.
Already motioned.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Our next, bid is on the Fairgrounds curbing and sidewalk project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We, as, as Vice Chairman, David mentioned, we've been using our millings to, to grade out, provide a base and then lay these millings in several locations. If you haven't been out to Fairgrounds lately, we have several thousand square feet of new parking lots out there with these millings and it, it's come fast. We've been building these with DOC, Department of Corrections inmate crew. And they have a, they actually have a paving machine and, and graders and other heavy equipment. And they've been doing an excellent job. This project right here is something that they're not capable of, and that's to build some curbing around the parking lots and also some, some ADA sidewalks and different things to link some of these together. So we put this out, out to bid. It was pretty short, but it looks like we have three bids to consider. This first one is from K-E-N-G Construction Incorporated. And they have a total bid cost of $207,311.
And I, Mr. Chairman, I have received, opened a packet from Rod E. Schlesner, Schlesner, doing business as HT4. And the bid that has been submitted is including tax, $135,628.51.
I've opened one from, I believe the company's name's ALK Asphalt. And it looks like their bid is 116,482. Yep. Make a motion to turn this over to staff to, for uniformity and conformity, I mean, and give the review on it and turn it over for the lowest conformity bid. Thank you.
All second. Supervisor Howard's motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Want to thank everybody for turning in a bid on those two items. We now need to close our regular, motion to close our regular meeting and go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I would go ahead and move, those who have an agenda can see the two, we've got two items. We don't know how long we'll be there. We, we, I, I would, my best guess is probably half an hour, possibly less. But I'd move that we go ahead and, and move into executive session to discuss two items.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
For staff and, and other electeds, I think we can be pretty brief, maybe, maybe 10, 15 minutes at the most.
Okay.
Sorry to make you wait. We'll, we'll be quick though.[837.01]
Thank everybody for your patience. Can we get a motion to end our executive session and go back into our regular meeting?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Can we get a motion to vote on what we discussed in our executive session?
I will make a motion.
I think your mic is off.
I'm sorry about that. Make a motion, we discussed the opioid settlement with the certain families and corporations in the executive session. And we, I would like to make a motion to approve the settlement, the opioid lawsuit with Purdue, the Sackler family.
I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes.
Also, the next discussion was about opioid settlement, also with several other entities which are, I'll probably butcher these names. Alvegin, Amnil, Apotex, Hikma or Haikma, and Endiver, Mylan, Sun, and Zytus companies to settle this opioid settlement.
I'll go ahead and second the motion and with the point of information, these settlements are a class action from, I guess, the counties in Arizona. And so this is a class action, details are, we don't have any details of times or amounts. And typically they'll, they'll pay out over a number of years, so it's not going to be a giant windfall. It's just going to be something that if it's, goes through that the county will participate and receive like we already are with one other settlement. So that's, that's the point of information.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. And that will be the end of our board of supervisor meeting today. Our meeting will be adjourned and thank you all for coming and being with us today.
Alright.